This meeting is called to order. And we will have a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Could we have a roll call, please, Megan?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki. Joe Reeser. George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Joe Reeser and Wendy Onuki?
I move to excuse Joe Reeser and Wendy Onuki.
Second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
They are excused. Moving on to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with public comments limited to three minutes for items number seven and number 11?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a county sheriff update in the community update section and changing the time for public comment from five minutes to three minutes.
Second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. It is now time for community update.
Kate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We do have the county sheriff, Dan Abbott, and I believe Casey Davis, the undersheriff, here to present some awards to some of our local law enforcement and first responder community for their efforts on July 4th of this year. Looks like just the undersheriff is here.
Sheriff Abbott apologizes. He had a prior obligation and he couldn't make it, but he would have loved to have been here. On July 4th of 2025, the Van Buren County SWAT team was called to the 28,000 block of County Road 388. Just a little background on the SWAT team. It is a multi-jurisdictional SWAT team with South Haven officers, Van Buren County, one Lawton officer, and three Chez medics on there. During that time, Van Buren County deputies attempted to execute a search warrant, and during that time, a subject detonated a pipe bomb as they were approaching. The Van Buren County SWAT team was then called in. A plan was devised, and during that time Sergeant Carlato, Officer Wildy, Medic Hanner, and Medic Smith arrived on scene along with various other members of the SWAT team. During that time, a plan came together that Sergeant Carlato, with a couple other team members, would approach the residence. At that time Sergeant Carlato fired three 40 millimeter single-shot CS gas containers into the window in order to try and get compliance from the suspect and get him to remove himself from the house. The subject advised that he was not going back to prison. He had multiple warrants and stated that he was going to kill law enforcement if this continued. After those three shots were fired, Sergeant Carlato and Officer Wildy put themselves inside the blast area. That is when the subject appeared from the residence and then threw two additional pipe bombs which detonated in front of Sergeant Carlato and Officer Wildy. An officer from Lawton was able to use a less lethal shotgun. That shotgun was used and it ultimately caused the suspect to surrender. He had a large laceration on his arm. At that time, we called for medics. Medic Hanner and Smith without question ran up and then immediately started providing aid for the suspect. That suspect was then taken into custody and lodged at the Van Buren County Jail. Being a part of this situation and being the team leader for the SWAT team, it was probably one of the worst calls that I've been a part of. The amount of heroism that these guys displayed was incredible. They were professional. They came up with a plan. They executed that plan, and ultimately I believed that not only saved a lot of officers' lives, but we were able to use less lethal in order to take him into custody, and he didn't lose his life. In that video, you can see one of the pipe bombs come out of the door, and Officer Wildy stood right there, pretty much looked danger right in the face, and got the job done. So with that, if I could get Sergeant Carlato. Shawn Smith, Drexel Hanner, and Officer Wildy up. We have four letters, letters of commendation.
Thank you so much for taking those risks, and this is not how you expected your 4th of July to turn out. But we are so glad that you were all there and ready to handle the case professionally and protect everybody. So really, we are all sending out our heartfelt gratitude to all of you, so thank you. Anything else, Kate?
No, I'm sure that they want to get back to their evenings. It's a beautiful day outside if they want to.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Moving on. It is now time for public comment for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing, and you have up to three minutes. This is for items on the agenda. Okay. Okay, thank you. Next, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through E?
I move to approve consent agenda, items A through E.
Second.
I would request that the item D be removed. I had a couple questions on some of the assets.
Okay. We will move that to work read. Let's do 10B.
Perfect.
Okay. Was there a motion to approve everything except for?
I'll move to approve A, B, C, and E.
Support.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley. Yes. Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, the city council will be asked to consider an introduction of a proposed ordinance regarding updates of the city's electric utility policy. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. This would be an introduction of an amended ordinance or an ordinance to amend the city's electric utility policy. Currently, we have our electric utility policy as an ordinance, and that sets the rates within the ordinance. As we've been learning through our studies with utilities, with costs, not just with the electric, but with the water sewer, we're finding that we need to be more facile with our rates and that we should be looking at them as a resolution that can be adopted as rates need to be adjusted. We have recently undergone a utility cost adjustment with UFS, with our electric utility. We do know that things are changing on the electrical landscape, not only with our, one, with our efforts to roll out automated metering, but we are also seeing more solar and more behind the meter generation. Dana Byrd, our Public Works Director, is here. We just recently did have a Public Works, I'm sorry, Board of Electric Utility, a public utility meeting just last Thursday, so Dana can give us some updates as to what's being asked of the council of this first reading. Of course, this will be a second, a second reading would be needed to adopt any ordinance, but we can go into what the particulars here. Of course, George Sleeper is our city council representative on that board if he has anything else to say. Dana?
Yeah, thanks, Kate. So we've been working with the city attorney's office and our consultant utility of Financial Solutions. It helps advise both our water sewer utility and electric utility on rates and policy matters that relate to our fees and charges to the customers. We've been working for quite some time with them on an updated cost of service study. Cost of service means that we evaluate our rates and fees and charges based on what it costs us as a municipality to provide that service to the customer. So we're not a for-profit utility. We're not an investor-owned utility. We're a municipal utility. So we do fall into that unique category of utilities that's different from a DTE or Consumers Energy, but it's still our obligation to the customers to look at what is our true cost of providing electric service from everything that we do to buy power off the transmission grid and all the fees that we pay to the transmission and power suppliers. When we buy power, to what does it cost to network it out through our grid and our circuits to every customer in the system? Obviously, we have staff for operations. We have vehicles for operations that all roll into that. And so we've been working on that study. A few of the things that came from that were, in general, it's been about a decade since any rates were adjusted on the base fees or the commodity side of things, but we also didn't have a rate for EV charge stations. So this would not be a charge station in anyone's home. It would be the commercial charge stations that are becoming more and more prevalent in the community, and those can really draw a huge load. So we did want to have a special rate class that would establish in our policies for those types of entities, as well as look at our residential, commercial, industrial rates overall. And also, as Kate mentioned, we're seeing a lot of fluctuation in the cost of buying power. There's, it's just, it's an auction every year. It's a market-driven entity, and there's a lot of electrification and not that many power plants coming back online throughout the nation. So there's a fluctuation in the market that's causing the cost that we pay to buy power then delivered to customers is going up. So we wanted to evaluate that. We also wanted to look at solar, cost of solar. So customers that have residential solar, we didn't have a correct balance of what we buy back power from individual entities that are generating solar on their customer class. So we wanted to look at that. So in the rate study that we did, the cost of service study, we looked at all of those things together, and then through our review with the attorneys as well, they recommended an ordinance update. So typically, the rates that the city adopts are through ordinance, which requires a first reading, a public hearing, a second reading. And it's a lot more common for communities to just adopt that by resolution. That gives us a little bit of flexibility when we do need to adjust a rate or a fee within our rules and regulations that we come to council. So there's still this council approval. It's just done through a resolution instead of an ordinance amendment every time. So that's really what's before the council is the first reading of the ordinance. There's two things contained in the ordinance. One is saying, you know, we're amending the ordinance to approve future rates and fees by resolution instead of always doing it as an ordinance amendment. And then the other is just a statement that more ties our rules and regulations to the ordinance itself. So it's just some clarifying language that the attorney suggested. They see typically in a lot of ordinances that wasn't in ours, and so they wanted to see that added as well.
Any questions? George, do you have comments?
Not really. Dana covered it pretty well. It's just that I think the fact that we did a cost of service study through Utility Financial Solutions gives us a firm foundation basis for this, for this rate adjustment. And the suggestion to change the ordinance such that the rates are changed by resolution going forward is a good, is a good move. And that's all really what we're doing tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mary?
I do. Yeah, so I'm concerned about going to a simple resolution because with the ordinance change, there's at least two hearings, and especially in the summer when people are traveling, they have a second opportunity to make comment versus one hearing and the resolution is done. I think it's more transparent to have two opportunities for people to comment on the rates. Also, you know, in looking at the rates, the proposed fee does not appear very progressive because in three years, you're doubling the basic fee from $6 to $12. And we continually hear that the standard monthly fee is starting to chip away at people's income, especially limited income. We see that with the sewer and water rates, and those were just raised in July. What I would like to see is a higher usage fee so that those who are conservative are paying less and that their monthly fee is more standardized. Because this also, if I understood things correctly, does not include the power cost adjustment, power cost adjustment, or the state mandated, mandated change for low-income energy assistance under the Michigan Public Act, correct?
Right. Yeah, the leaf surcharge that'll be implemented on September's bills is a state law requirement that every municipal utility and every other utility in the state has to implement for affordable income assistance for both heat and gas, but the electric utilities have to collect that. So there will be a $1.25 charge appearing on September bills. That was requirement of the state. That money is collected by us as a utility, but we can't spend it within the utility. It's just a pass-through to the state fund. And then folks who want to see if they qualify for that fund can apply from throughout the state, and it's a state-run program. So it's potential that customers within South Haven could qualify and apply for that, but it's money that we have to collect on our bill, but we can't directly use it in the system. I can, I can talk a little bit about the base fee versus the commodity fee. We've had this conversation a lot on both the water sewer side and the electrical side, and I think it's a common misconception that the base fee is penalizing the year-round resident or the lower-use resident. When, when they look at these fee recommendations, one, they compare to our cost of service overall, but then to determine how we're dividing the base versus the commodity fee, they really want to get the base fees in line with kind of an industry standard for that. But it also, when you have a base fee, you're collecting that from everyone year-round. If you limit it more to a commodity fee or you're bringing in revenue from that, you're only charging on people who are using that electricity. And if you're only using it six months of the year or four months of the year, you're not collecting as much revenue. That it costs, still costs us money to provide service to every home. And so that's why we try and load the base fee is because it's more representative of a year-round cost to folks than if it's a commodity charge. Those who aren't using electricity for several months of the year aren't paying into the system, but it still costs us a base amount to be able to provide, the system to provide to every home. Does that make sense?
No, I understand exactly how it works, but what I'm saying is as these monthly standard fees continue to go up and up, and in this situation, I mean, the projected percentage change in year one, it's the highest for residential, has the highest change. And the sewer and water rates just went up, and we're going to have these other mandated charges. And all I hear is, you know, the monthly fees are killing me. I can't afford all these fees, and between the monthly fees for electricity and water and sewer, and then you add the millages and the regular taxes, that's what's driving people out. So that's why I appreciate the desire to have the year-round income, but it, again, it is not, when you are basically doubling the base rate for residents from here, from now until 2027, so just in really two years, I, I do not see that as progressive, and I see that it just continues to add up against the, the, the people on the more restricted income. I would rather see a slightly higher rate fee so that when there is the excessive fee, they are paying that, and then you would have the amount from that to carry us through. I just, I, again, I don't support doubling the base pay within two years.
Yeah, and, and perhaps we can get some more information on that because we do, the commodity fee, that you would say you'd rather see that loaded into, that increases year one, but in year two and year three, that actually decreases to try and accommodate for the difference between the base fee going up. So what Utility Financial Solutions does is they look at the average kind of customer in each customer class, and so they can look at those different scenarios when they recommend those different rate splits to us. So that's, that's where that came from is yes, the, the base charge goes up, but the commodity charge steps down to help account for that. So what's proposed in the rate adjustment, which again, I think today is just the reading of the ordinance. You don't have to make any decision on the rates today. But what's shown in there is the base fee stepping up, but the commodity fee stepping down after year one. We worked with them on what is a adjustment that ought to be made in year one, and that's where the overall increase in year one would come in at around a 4.9% overall for all classes. But then after that, in year two and year three, the base fee goes up, but it tries to balance out with the commodity going down. And in their presentation, they showed some different charts, kind of showing how that would level off over different usage rates for different customer classes that to accommodate for the base fee going up, that usage is going down.
But, so when you say average, what is the average? Because we have so many that have no usage several months of the year. So how do you really calculate an average in this situation where we have such a?
Well, the good thing is, we've asked UFS if they can come here on the 18th and give a presentation. Maybe we can go into more depth with UFS here.
Okay.
Great.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to introduce the proposed electric utility ordinance and set the matter for a public hearing on August 18th at 7:00 PM?
I make a motion to introduce the ordinance change for sections 8636 and section 8626 and to approve the ordinance at the next August 18th meeting.
Support?
Further, just minor discussion. So I will not be supporting this because it is setting the rate basically with the resolution and the ordinance. And what I am hearing from people is we need to really look at the, the monthly fees, and I would like more information before I set an agenda item for a final approval, because when it's here for final approval, we rarely make any changes. And I would like for the final approval, a marked-up copy of the ordinance because that was not included.
Okay. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes. Moving on, number 10. The city council will be asked to receive an update from the Director of Public Works, Dana Byrd.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So we have quite a bit of construction still going on around town. And just to let folks know, I'm going to be presenting everything that Public Works does and a lot of status on ongoing construction to the Rotary tomorrow morning at their meeting at 7:00. So happy to do that. Elkenberg Project is still under construction for the road. They've been doing work on the Santerre Sewer and Water Main. They're about done with the underground, and they're going to start doing staking and more layout for some of the sidewalk and curb changes over there. We did get the basketball courts finished in time for Blueberry Fest, but when folks are over in that area for the basketball tournament and other activities, they should just still use caution in that area because the road still is under construction over there. You can still get to the park. You can still get to the basketball courts, but there is still a lot of ongoing construction over there. So appreciate the extra caution folks have. July 29th, we had a ribbon cutting at the wastewater plant. Appreciate everyone who was able to make it out to that. That marks the completion of a major improvement project at the wastewater plant that we were fortunate to get a lot of grant funding for. And I know the folks and staff over there have been living in a construction zone for a couple of years. They're ready to take a breath and get back to just operations. Surf Internet has resumed work in town. They completed the work in the MDOT rightaways, and they're starting to do some work north of the river. I heard they're over on Park Street area. We continue to work with them and keep a punch list of restoration items. So if folks, if folks do have questions about that, they can feel free to call Public Works. But like any of our kind of citywide construction, the first thing you'll see is the flags going out, and then within a couple of weeks, they'll be there to do the work, do an underground work, and then they come through later on after that to do restoration. So there is a multi-step process to both the fiber installation and our lead line work going on throughout town. I heard that last week, they replaced the 200th water service in town, so that was a nice milestone to hit for the five-star project. And we continue working with them on their progress. They did have a bit of a lapse in their restoration timing with the subcontractors and crews that they use for that. So we have gotten quite a few phone calls from folks. We're tracking those. We're getting those back to the contractor so that they can keep up with the restoration. Again, there's a lot of asphalt and concrete work related to that project. They're planning to do that August 11th. So I know quite a few of the calls we've received are about a part of a sidewalk, part of a concrete driveway, or a patch in the road. It's just taken them a couple of weeks to get that together so they can come do that, but they're planning that work on August 7th, or, I'm sorry, August 11th, excuse me. We're under construction over at Public Works. If you try to come in our driveway, you'll notice it's down to one lane, and we're looking forward to getting that water main in and getting the road back soon, but it's probably going to be torn up for another couple of weeks until we can get pavement down. We've had some staffing news to talk about. Mike Dop is returning as city engineer over at Public Works, so he had his first day today, and we're happy to have him back. And Bobby Owens was named the water and sewer foreperson for the water sewer department. And we're working on hiring a mechanic and more senior equipment operators for water and sewer. We're also continuing to work through a long backlog of different utility connection requests and development reviews. I know I haven't been able personally to spend as much time one-on-one with property owners as I'd like, but we're looking forward to staffing up and getting caught up on some of those things as quickly as we can. And then also just a note on the missed dig flags. Again, we get a lot of calls about that. Whenever anybody's digging, whether it's a contractor or yourself in your front yard, you ought to call Miss Dig. They'll come out. The flags need to be in there for 21 days by law. So we appreciate when people can leave those alone. I know it's inconvenient to work around for folks, but we really do need that because it helps the contractors do their underground work. And then when they're done digging, they should pull them out. So that's really the highlights of my update, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I did have a question.
Go ahead.
Dana, thank you for your, your update. And I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. We were talking about lead line replacement because just they've been going through Ward Two, and so we've been fielding a lot of calls, Wendy and I. So typically, they'll come in, they'll do the repair, replace the line, and then a separate crew comes to do the restoration.
Correct. Yeah, it's a multi-step process where when they go to work in an area, they start getting information out to the residents to try and do investigations. So they may have a VAC truck come through that's making small potholes in the yard to verify where the service line is. And then once it's a fully verified line, they can contact the homeowner, schedule its replacement, and then the, so there's a, first crew is really the VAC truck crew and the scheduling crew that comes through. And then the replacement crew will schedule, come through, they make a little bigger mess because they've got to dig for the water line. And then finally, at the end of that, the restoration crew comes through. And so they've set a goal of every two weeks to come through on yard restoration, concrete and asphalt. But as I mentioned, there was a bit of a lapse there toward the end of July where it had taken them some extra time to get the hardscape restoration in, but that should be coming through August 11.
I anticipate it'll come back.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mayor?
Yep. So first, thank you for the DPW ribbon cutting. That was amazing. Your staff did, were wonderful tour guides and answered some.
Your staff did, were wonderful tour guides and answered some tough questions and we're very engaging, so thank you for that. For the street work that's ongoing, so we have the list of streets from our capital improvement plan from March. Is there any other place other than the fiscal CIP list that you present in April for monitoring what streets are being done when?
Yeah, we've actually, not necessarily for the public, but we've been having a lot of internal engineering meetings with our team and we're looping in Mike now that he's on board into that because we are aware that the Erie Hill over by the water filtration plant has kind of gotten worse as well as Bailey. And so those two in particular, we're looking at coming up with solutions to see if those can get resurfaced more in the springtime because those were further out on our capital plan. But after the capital plan was put together, we realized there's really a greater need, so we had to shuffle some priorities around there. So, you know, we're still moving forward with Elkenburg and Hereon Street. The bids were just received for Hereon Street, so we're looking forward to getting that project awarded through MDOT soon. But yeah, there are some other streets that aren't on the plan that we're looking at actively, trying to figure out how can we get those touched either, probably not this fall, but next spring.
And that will just come back in one of your updates?
Yeah.
Super, thank you. And for the backlog, how big of a backlog do you have from, you know, the change in employees leaving and rehiring?
Well, I know quite a few folks are waiting on sewer estimates to hook to Santeri Sewer and Water and we've been working through those as well as just kind of some one-on-one property owner issues related to either drainage or items like that. So it's, we have, we have quite a list of folks that we hope to get back to soon, but we're, we got to work through them one by one and still manage the overall workload of the department, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
I'm here for 10B too.
That's right, 10B.
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 Oh, 10B.
Dana can help with that.
The vehicle.
Oh, sorry. Is there a motion to approve the motor pool purchase of five assets for a total estimated cost of $489,425.70 and authorize staff to execute the necessary documents?
I move that city council approve the motor pool purchases of five assets for the estimated cost of $489,425.70 and authorize staff to execute the necessary documents.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yes, please. So my biggest set of questions is with regard to vehicle 101, the backyard machine, which would be new equipment and, you know, it's over a quarter million and my understanding is it's really mainly for emergencies and getting to off-road easements where the bucket truck cannot access. And right now, you are doing that by using another vehicle from another municipality.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about that a little bit. So this request has come from our electrical team for the past several years and we included it this year because we saw the importance of having it on hand firsthand this winter when we had the big windstorm and they were responding to several locations. We had to call in mutual aid from BPW to come down specifically to get to a pole that was on fire back down a tight easement along the lake shore where the winds were really whipping it up. And so we saw the use of it, we saw how many instances we could use that. It's not just for emergency response, but it's also for any routine work that we may have throughout the year that involves getting into a tight space where we either can't get there with a bucket truck very easily without cutting a lot of trees back or with fences and things like that. We try not to tear up people's yards with a bucket truck as well. So this is a tracked machine that can get into a lot of those tight city easement spaces where people have, there may be fences, there may be trees, there may be hedges. And so it's something that they'll use to access whenever they need to get into those spaces in non-emergency and emergency situations. It also gives us the ability to hold a pole and set a pole at the same time. So right now with our equipment, we can hold a pole or we can set a pole, but there's a lot of times where you need to do both at the same time to make a repair and this will allow us to set up that backyard machine, hold a pole steady while we use our bucket truck to set a new pole there too. So it gives us that versatility to be able to do more just right, routine maintenance and repair work in the system.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies it a lot. And then for the Kawasaki, so I was talking with Kate earlier, in the vehicle repair, I see the 2011 Kawasaki. And just trying to appreciate how many ATVs we have that can be used for the beach. I appreciate one is, doesn't have as much capacity to go up hills, but you know, North Beach all the way down to Newcombe Beach is pretty flat. Just, you know, people see us spending money after money and just want to appreciate the need for this at this time when we're reevaluating our beach safety. Is it critical to get before the end of this beach season?
Yeah, so I'd be happy to talk about that. So we moved up replacement of this vehicle because it's currently undergoing what would need to be a $9,000 repair to get it back into service. So we have had times throughout the season where we're down either to one vehicle, one mule or one mule in a, in a vehicle that's not going to drive on the beach. So it's really critical for us to always have two beach mule type vehicles in service so we can get to the flags and kind of change them in a timely manner throughout all the beaches we monitor. But really what drove moving up the replacement of this, originally it was scheduled to be replaced in another year and a half, two years, but because it was facing a $9,000 repair to get it back into service or replace it at this point for $20,000, we thought it was well justified to do that. It was also, has about, I think, just under 40,000 miles on it, which is quite high for an ATV. So we did talk to Van Der Zee's Motorplex about that and they've been suggesting for quite some time that it's near the end of its service life and now we see it with this repair cost that we're facing. So we do have another park mule that was scheduled for replacement this year and that may still come back within the fiscal year and we would ask for that to be replaced. But we really can't use that for beach enforcement mainly because a lot of the times it's used at the same time to do seasonal parks work. And so if the beach enforcement people are going to be using it all day over their two shifts, then it's not available to support the park department, so that's the reasons that we moved it up. You know, overall, this year, we have about a $1.3 million budget to do equipment and vehicle replacements. So this request today is just to do the highest priority items that we had on our list, so.
Got it. And what is the usual mileage, lifespan of a, of a mule?
I would have to look that up, but I was told that when it gets close to 40, it's way up there and our mules take quite a bit of wear and tear on the, on the beach and the sand, so.
Okay, thank you.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Hosley? Yes. I'm sorry, Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to, we're now at public comment. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda and you have up to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Kane Goodson at 609 Chamber Street. I have, I have a few issues I brought up over to Ms. Hosier, Dana, Mary and yourself and have both came out during your, during your talks for mayor. Kind of tired of waiting. It's been four months, actually it's been over five since I brought up drainage issues from Jake Way realtors. One thing I did not inform Kate Hosier or Dana about was I had talked to Russ, the building inspector, and Mr. Loper multiple times over the years to get this done. These, this is an ordinance issue. Their drainage drains directly into my back property. I did not think it was going to become and continue to be a 120-day, 180-day problem. I thought this would be a very simple, hey, Jake Way, fix your stuff. Plain and simple, I've had 15 yards of dirt, I tried to do grass, I've had a basement wall due to tree and water damage have to be replaced, over $20,000 for the wall plus $20,000 for tree removal. I, again, I, I have a thing here to read, but I'm trying to keep this short because you guys want three minutes. Even though I did not tell Ms. Hosier or Mr. Bird about the conversations with the building inspector and the code enforcement officer, I do not believe this should have lasted four months. If you'd like more information, I will be happy to give it to you, but I don't want to, I've repeated myself enough times that I'm sick and tired of waiting for a fix. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Am I close enough to this? Bob Metzen, 130 Van Buren Street. So I'm actually here tonight to thank the city council and the city for allowing us to do the bridge planter project. I've been involved in a lot of volunteer things and involved in that the last three years, a year ago, I couldn't say no to Bob copping in the Oddlands and they kind of made me head of that project. But it's really a great project as the feet on the street, the feedback we not only get from people as they walk by, but people who actually support it in terms of who've lost loved ones. Recently, we had a woman who lost her longtime husband who loves, say, at South Haven, somebody's battling cancer. It's really great that you gave them a place where they can, you know, celebrate the lives and do those other things. I think it's very unique. I don't know that I've run into it anywhere else. But I also quickly wanted to just recognize because it really is a community effort. So we had guys like Jensen excavating, we, we built 15, 16 new planters, so you couldn't even tell we did such a good job. We repaired another 30, so they were great. Van Tyl's Nursery, I know they're not exactly in South Haven, but I had a lot of sleepless nights up through January because we didn't have a supplier. January 26th, I ran into Tammy, thank goodness, and you could see the flowers, she did a great job. Elevate landscape, spent a lot of time and effort to make sure they, you know, they, they stay good. Rod's Printing, that guy has the toughest job trying to get all those inscriptions on a little card, but they do a good job. You know, obviously the Rotary and Garden Club who help plant and, you know, dismantle. And then, you know, everybody knows Tom Renner, but Tom Renner, one of the other things he does is he helps us fertilize and water. And I got to thank the city Auny, who does your flowers. I think she volunteers her time, I'm not really sure, but she shows up early on Thursday mornings.
Give one minute.
Okay, she shows up early on Thursday mornings to help. She's a flower whisperer, has walked me off the ledge many a time. But again, thank you, you know, for allowing us to do that. My hope would be, and we talked about it before, is that maybe we can expand that to other areas of the city. So I would ask you folks and, and I also want to thank Kate because every time I call with an issue, two hours late, now within two hours, somebody's calling and I do want to talk to you about the Christmas decorations because I need some help with the electricity. But again, thanks for doing that, it's really appreciated.
Thank you, Bob. Welcome.
Thank you. Kansas Printley, 345 Bailey Avenue. There is a primary election tomorrow. I want to say that the polls usually open at 7:00, close at 8:00, 7:00 AM, close at 8:00 PM, you can correct me if you, but, all right. Primary election tomorrow, civic duty, very important. Make a plan, grab a couple of friends who are eligible to vote, make it a carpool. Come on out, come on out and vote. We have a lot of great people running for, for city right now between the mayors and the wards. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Kent, when you mentioned 7:00 to 8:00, Megan nodded, so you were right. When you mentioned 7:00 to 8:00 PM, Megan nodded, you were correct.
Yep, you're right. Anybody else? If not, we're moving on to city managers' comments.
Thank you, Mayor. As Kent did point out, we do have an election tomorrow, so 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We will have limited parking here, we're going to try to set aside those spots for voters. It is also the same night as National Night Out, which will be occurring, I think, from, oh gosh, three to five?
Five to seven, I think.
Five to seven, thank you. And so while we have that, we usually are the overflow, so we'll try to put out signs that says this is for parking only, but we're hoping a lot of people come out to National Night Out. We're also doing a lot of preparations for National Blueberry Festival this weekend. We'll have some road closures, parking restrictions, we're hoping to have them posted by this Wednesday. Of course, Water Street will be down, we'll have the parade route posted and any other kind of restrictions. I did want to let council know that you may have no doubt seen some media coverage of last Friday's or last, sorry, last Thursday's rescue of two boaters when their Zodiac capsized on Lake Michigan near South Beach. It's a great story of teamwork and technology and I'd like to share more details with you. When the distress call came in at around 8:01 on Thursday, it was all hands on deck. Beach safety was the first units on scene. Two of our beach enforcement attendants were first there and they quickly removed the new Emily technology from the storage box. Emily, as you know, stands for Emergency Integrated Life Saving Lanyard, which is a high-speed remote robot, controlled robot, rescue buoy that can be used to assist swimmers in distress. We use the Emily unit that we do have on South Beach was recently donated by Ryan and Mandy Servetus and, and it has been placed on South Beach for staff's usage in case of a water emergency. The staff were joined by members of South Haven Police Department, the Van Buren Sheriff's Marine Patrol, and Chase who quickly went into action. In fact, Officer Keen, who's been working as an interim sergeant, was able to deploy the Emily on the beach. Happily, the Emily was not needed, nearby Good Samaritans responded quickly with nearby surfers to help the boaters, some of whom were wearing lifesafety jackets. But the Emily wasn't needed in this instance and it was deployed as a precaution and performed to our expectations. So I'm delighted to report that no one was injured and I want to play, applaud the quick thinking actions of everyone involved who helped achieve this stellar result. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I'll take five minutes of questions for Kate.
It is five to seven, I confirmed for National Night Out.
It should be on our website.
That's where I looked, yep. For these water runoff issues, they seem to be prevalent and what can residents do to get it, get it docketed to be reviewed? I know Ms. Shugel waited several months. Kane has waited a really long time, I don't even know if it's registered in the system. How can that get taken care of?
I'll have to review. Obviously, as you just heard, we've just now gotten an engineer back on staff, Mike Dop, who's very familiar with our organization as well as our city residents and our, and our ordinances. I don't have a timeframe for you, but I do know that with his onboarding, that, that gives me a lot of relief that we can start addressing some of these issues.
Well, so I guess.
I don't have an answer for you as to when I can get back to that, but I can tell you that.
That's.
Thank you, I appreciate that. But what I can tell you is that I'm very happy that Mike Dop is coming back on board and we can see what progress we can make.
I'm asking the question, how do they report it so it's registered in the system?
We take, we take complaints at DPW at southhavenmi.gov or 637-0737, just like we do for all Public Works comments.
Okay, the DHS workshop, there's three Saturdays. Do you, can you provide to us, because when we spoke earlier today, you couldn't say exactly what would be the topic?
There are three Saturdays that we're looking at. In fact, I've sent out an email to council members to find out if they're available for the 13th, the 20th and the 27th. I have not heard yet from you, Wendy or Letitia. This is all part of the proposal that came forward from DHS. This would be something they would, they would be looking at to meeting with council and yeah, unfortunately, they need quite a bit of time. But what I've hearing from DHS is that they're looking to have this, this meeting so they want to kind of present where they're at, at the time and get some buy-in and, and understand that they've, they've done their research so far and they have to find out from council where they want to go from there.
Okay. And for the Hale Building, it's, we had received an email about that, so can you say anything about that?
Yes, Mr. Locker is looking to extend his PDU approval process. I should. I should have more available for the council to consider at their 8:18 meeting.
And so for follow-up, just for a more of a PSA-type thing, for vehicles parked over the sidewalk, those can be called into the non-emergency Van Buren County and they are able to dispatch the local parking police. And can you provide us reports about how many tickets are issued for parking over the sidewalk? I know that there was one on Monroe Boulevard.
Yes, I know, I know you emailed me about that particular one at 742 Monroe, but I have not had a chance to check on that. I'm sure that we can see what kind of report can be run, but right now I'm not, I'm not aware of what we can do. So I don't want to overpromise. I'm, I tend to underpromise and overdeliver.
And then earlier today, I had written, so for the Planning Commission, there's a rezoning for 120 baseline. And based on communication from Cali, it appears that under the circumstances, although there is a public hearing on Thursday, there will not be a final decision. It will be continued or renoticed for that rezoning.
I'm sorry, was there a question there?
I'm just confirming that that's what my understanding is, is that there will not be a decision from the Planning Commission, a recommendation at the Thursday meeting.
When we notice a public hearing, we hold a public hearing. My understanding is that no, the Planning Commission is not going to be asked for a decision because there was a parcel ID that was not included in the public notice. That means they will, they will have to have a second meeting. Hopefully at that second meeting, the Planning Commission is ready to make a recommendation having, having had two now, public hearings. But at this point, that's my understanding.
Thank you. We're moving on. It's time for mayor and council person's comments. Letitia.
No comment.
George?
I just want to say good luck to Megan and all of her poll workers. And thanks in advance for all your hard work.
Mary?
Yeah. I want to thank Jim Hettinger for the economic, economic strategy plan presentation. And I was wondering if his slides could be linked to the newsroom item. And the next one will be on August 26th where he said the employers would be more engaged. And on August 10th, we have our National Blueberry Festival fly-in at the area, South Haven Area Regional Airport. That's always a fun time. Sometimes there's a K-9 copilot, so it's always fun to walk around. And there will be air balloons, weather, air balloon on a tether, weather permitting and helicopter rides for fees. And on August 16th, we have our 13th Annual Salute to Veterans Boat Parade and Flyover at 12 noon. So I'm looking forward to that. My husband and I are very supportive of it. And also, South Haven Community Foundation did a great job of grant giving, Play Palooza and the Super Saturday Soaker this past weekend. Lots of kids had lots of fun at no cost, thanks to the grant. And also I want to give a big shout out to Bronson Safe Kids. They were able to provide four helmets to the Super Soaker Saturday on short notice for the bikes that were given away. And I would just like to throw it out for Kate's consideration. For, we have our National Night Out. Was wondering if we could do a First Responders Day for 2025. It's September 11th. And just hosting recognition of the great services that we have. Similar, you know, we had some recognition tonight, but our great police department, emergency services, hospital staff, all the first responders. It'd be nice if we could do something local.
Yeah.
My comment quickly was just thank you to the Van Buren Conservation District for holding the recycling event at the DPW. It went off with military precision with one lane. They had traffic going and it was, it was great. And so it's nice to get that junk out of my garage.
Thank you. I just want to thank Dana and DPW for the repairs to the sidewalks, especially at Fruit Street sidewalks. So thank you so much. And as everybody has said, remember to vote tomorrow. And thank you to everybody who showed up. We're adjourned if there's no further business.